It's 7:00 PM and we'll call the meeting of the Financial Personnel Committee meeting to order, and we will start with a public comment. Anyone out there zooming in?
I can't even, I can't see them.
Nope.
No. Anyone in the audience want to make any public comments before we start? There'll be also a public comment at the end. Okay. Seeing no one, hearing no one, we'll move on. All right. I need to acknowledge that an executive session was held Tuesday evening, December 7th, 2021, at 6:00 PM involving the following matters and the corresponding sections of the Sunshine Act. Litigation matters regarding an application for conditional use, section 708A, 4, and A5. And the next thing, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you'll see the minutes, the finance reports, insurance brokers, Sunshine Act, Shepherd &amp; Myers-Dan Project, the RACP grant, Market House, and some special events, some good things on there. Anyone have any questions about any of those before I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I do have one question.
Please.
On the Shepherd &amp; Myers-Dan Project, it states that there's no additional costs to the borough from the contractor. What about Gannett Fleming's time of the additional 40 days?
Yes and no. If they're on site, they're on site at key times there. If it extends it out, it's possible that they may have to be there for those things. It was more they're just trying to make sure that they don't get themselves painted into a corner because of the time it took to get the regulatory approval in place. So you can almost think about it, everything just kind of shifted time-wise, so they're extending the time.
So we don't expect an EWO from Gannett Fleming for their inspection time?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other questions about anything on the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, and it could be saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're happy to welcome Frank and Glenn here this evening to give us an information update on the Hanover Trolley Trail Project, and there's information at your place regarding it. Who's going to start? Me. Okay, Glenn, go.
Good evening. My name is Gwen Luce. I'm the Executive Director for the York County Rail Trail Authority, very pleased to be here, and with me is our Chairman Frank Kempf. We'll be as quick as we can, we don't want to take up too much of your meeting time. You do have a copy of our brief agenda in front of you, and there are four meeting objectives on there that I would just call your attention to. And I want to begin by thanking the borough and Borough Council for their past support of the Hanover Trolley Trail. And that includes owning, maintaining, and operating the section of the Hanover Trolley Trail that's here in the borough. I have some quick statistics to share with you. That section of the Hanover Trolley Trail is seven tenths of a mile. It's been there since 2008. Over the 10 years, the borough has taken care of the maintenance on that trail, and that's to the tune of $18,700 over 10 years. So a little bit more than $1,800 per year. And you have also helped with some improvements to the tune of $36,000 over 10 years. So that's about $3,600 per year, and we thank you very much for that. We also want to thank you for some smaller partnerships that we've engaged in. We have been asked to do some reviewing for the land development plans at Cherry Tree Residential Development. That's a development where the trolley trail will come directly through there and access all of the families that live in that residential development. And we were very pleased to be brought into that project to review the traffic patterns in there. And lastly, I wanted to call your attention briefly to the Oil Creek Restoration Plan. Oil Creek does, a small portion of it is here in the borough as it heads into Penn Township, and we're involved very heavily with the restoration project on Oil Creek, primarily in Heidelberg Township. But it does look at Oil Creek at the trail, at the creek's head here in the borough. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Frank, and he is going to refer a little bit to the second page, which has a map of the Hanover Trolley Trail. So if you look at that, Frank?
The Hanover Trolley Trail is really the primary focus of the York County Rail Trail Authority and will be for the next five, perhaps as long as 10 years. We've pivoted away from the Heritage Rail Trail, that's, our work essentially there is completed, and we're now looking almost singularly at the Hanover Trolley Trail. Obviously, it's named for the former trolley that used to run into Hanover and from York. A couple updates on what's going on there. In December of 2020, exactly a year ago, we acquired eight and a half miles of a dormant rail line, a GNW line. It runs from Getzrun Road to Mangus Mills, then there's a gap, and then it runs from Main Street in Spring Grove to West Manchester Township in Bear. That's a total of eight and a half miles. As soon as we acquired that, we engaged the services of the engineering firm, C.S. Davidson, to begin design and permitting to convert that abandoned rail corridor into a multi-use trail for non-motorized vehicles. That will be done, the trail construction itself, we do not have enough money to do it all at one time, eight and a half miles. It'll be done in sections, and the things that'll control when the sections are done are, number one, the environmental permitting, that's in public works projects, I don't have to tell you folks, that's always a time constraint in terms of when you can bid the job and do the work. And then, secondly, funding. We don't have all the money to build the whole thing now, we're out there beating the bushes, getting grants wherever we possibly can. Again, probably the same things you folks do on a pretty regular basis, you know, looking for money to support your activities. The initial sections of construction are going to be done east of Spring Grove, in other words, from Spring Grove towards West Manchester. We hope to bid a very small project, it'll go right from downtown Spring Grove, not even a half a mile, quite honestly, to the east, to tie into the existing piece of the Hanover Trolley Trail. And again, that's shown on the map that you have there, it's basically the green line, and it goes east from Spring Grove to where the red line is on your map. Closer to Hanover here, the railroad that we purchased, as I said earlier, the railroad corridor, goes, starts at Getzrun Road and goes to the east towards Spring Grove. That would be the logical place for us to start construction immediately adjacent to Hanover, the closest to Hanover. However, Oil Creek is adjacent to that rail corridor for almost the whole length of that rail corridor between Getzrun Road and Mangus Mills. And between Getzrun Road and Jacobs Mill Road, that's the next road that it crosses, the Oil Creek has undermined the roadbed, and the rails are actually hanging up in the air, sometimes we have pictures of this. The bottom line is, that stream needs to be restored to more like normal or original conditions before we can proceed with trail construction in that area. This past year, we commissioned and completed a study, essentially a feasibility study, a restoration study for the Oil Creek in this area. We identified three properties, two of them between Getzrun Road and, it might be, it's either three or four properties, between Getzrun Road and Jacobs Mill Road, and then there's one additional property just east of Jacobs Mill Road. And again, what we need to do is, we need to go to those property owners, and we've already approached them to get consent in order to do stream restoration work in their area, on their property. It generally is at no cost to the homeowner, or the property owner, I should say, but we do need that permission in order to proceed. Again, we've got a grant application in with DEP, and we're hoping to see that grant, a favorable response on that grant early in 2022. We would immediately start design of the restoration project. Theoretically, it could be done in 2022, but we're not sure. The point is, we can't build trail going east from Getzrun Road until that stream is restored and essentially does not, no longer undermines the rail corridor. So the restoration project needs to proceed, actual trail construction in the area. The entire eight and a half miles of trail construction, our current estimate is about $12 million. Big, big ticket, obviously. We've very recently got some really good news. We received within the last few months, $500,000 from York County through the American Rescue Plan funding, good news. And then, just within the last week, Governor Wolf's office announced a $1 million grant from the PA Redevelopment Capital System Program, RACP, or, again, I know it's the metrics that's on your agenda today, I saw tonight. So, again, you all are tapping into the same funds that we're tapping into there. So we're encouraged by those recent numbers. We still have to raise some money to do this, we're going to be doing that over the next five years, probably, but we're encouraged that we got a good start in terms of some money in the bank that we can actually start some construction, get some dirt moved, get something on the ground so people can use it.
Okay, I just want to wrap things up then, and mention to you another program that's going on in the County of York that I know is coming here to Hanover, and that is the York County Trail Towns Program. On the second page, we give you a photograph of what the trolley looked like when it came into Hanover Downtown. We thought you might be interested in seeing that photograph. That was like in the 19, early 1900s to 1930 in that area. And then the photograph there in the middle, these are typical rail trail visitors. These are people today that are visiting the Heritage Rail Trail and going into trail communities like Glen Rock, New Freedom, Seven Valleys Railroad, and the City of York. And we feel very strongly that this is really a good program, this Trail Town Program, that can really benefit Hanover Borough in the very near future. The trick is bringing those visitors into your downtown, and that is something that the York County Economic Alliance is certainly more than willing to work with Borough Council, they have an action team already in place, to determine how Hanover Borough's downtown can benefit through the Trails Town Program, and in the future then become an authentic trail town. So we're very excited about our work in the near future to get more trail built toward Hanover, and we're very excited to bring these types of visitors into your downtown. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Any questions?
Yeah, Eric, have you gotten them in touch with the Center for Water Quality Excellence? Is some opportunities on funding that way?
Not at this time, no.
You might want to look into those, that organization, and also whether or not FEMA or NDOT multimodal funds could come into play.
We have in the past tapped into stormwater management funds through Penn Vest, and we're definitely going to be looking at that for this section between Spring Grove and Hanover. Because of Oil Creek, a lot of what's happening with Oil Creek is stormwater related. So we do feel very strongly that those funds are going to bring us up into the millions, which is what we're going to need, yeah, but thank you.
I mean, as far as the transportation funds, because of the interconnection between built-out communities, it may have some opportunities there as well.
Yeah, that's definitely a source. The first thing that you mentioned, I'm not familiar with that.
Talk with Eric, he can get you connected with them. They are an organization set up by Penn Vest to basically help in finding, funding for different types of projects, particularly associated with water quality.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
We are excited about being a trail town, so we did meet those folks already, and they assessed some things that we need to do here. So all good stuff, and thank you very much.
It is, yeah.
Thank you.
And those smaller communities that Gwen mentioned, Glen Rock and New Freedom and stuff, smaller than Hanover certainly, I mean, it's real practical stuff that's getting done there, like bike racks, like signing, like road crossing markings, in other words, to get the connection between the business district and the trail itself.
The good things are happening in those towns, yes?
Yeah, and they can happen here, too. I know they can.
Right.
And they will, yeah, they will.
Both. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay, next we have a meet and greet, we're meeting some new employees. Valerie is our administrative assistant for Communications and Issues, and she's a busy girl. Tell us a little bit about what your background and what you're doing.
Hey, I'd be glad to.
Excuse me, take your mask off.
Okay. So I have an interesting background. I grew up in a military family and then was married to a military man, so moved around the first half of my life. The second half of my life, I raised my children in Greencastle, Pennsylvania. And while I was there, I worked as a communications, in the Communications Department in Emersburg Academy, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but it's a nine through 12 prep school. And then I worked for a Christian nonprofit, doing administration and events and communication there, moving into the Chamber of Commerce most recently. So I was there six years, started as the executive assistant and landed as the executive director my last year during COVID. And as we went through that, of course, there was that whole challenge of continuing to plan events, keep the funding going, keep the community engaged. So I think all of those things that I did there are falling naturally into my role here, in addition to the assistant in the Finance Department, and then, of course, Tanan, which is a great variety of administrative roles that I'm getting to do. I'm working with the communications, the social media, the press releases, the community engagement, specifically then with the Market House. I've had the privilege the last few weeks to attend the Market House, really engage with the vendors, get to know them personally, build those relationships, and then, of course, spread that on some social media as well. So, so far, so good. I'm energized to serve in this role, and I think that, you know, with, one thing I wanted to focus on, too, is as the enthusiasm for the Market House and the communication about the borough in general grows, I think there can really begin to see some cohesiveness with all these parts and pieces, and just keeping the community aware and engaged about what's happening.
It's great, communications is high on our list, so that's just fantastic.
Yes.
Any questions for Valerie? We're happy to have you with us, thank you very much, thanks for your work.
My pleasure, thank you.
And we also have Chris, who's our new building permit manager slash zoning officer. It's a fun job.
Good evening.
Hi, Chris, welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about your background, if you would, please.
I come to you with over 30 years' experience in public safety, 15 years of that plus in code enforcement. My last duties and assignment before I came and was fortunate enough to come here to the borough of Hanover, I was a fire marshal and a chief code enforcement officer for another municipality in Cumberland County. For now, this is my first week, just came in on Monday, so what I'm doing right now is looking at policies, procedures, practices within the Code Enforcement Division here, and looking at what I can do to help enhance that, to better serve the community, and to also streamline some of those processes to make it easier for the other employees, things like that, and of course, reporting those back to Mr. Mainz and having discussion there as to how we're going to move forward.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
One week, you know, welcome, now you're only here a couple of days, but welcoming, certainly comes a lot of background.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Chris?
Other than Mr. Mainz?
We wish you good luck.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You have a big job. Good luck to you. Thank you very much for coming. Next, we have interviewed some candidates for some appointed positions. Gary Bond did indicate he can't be here due to his business commitment, am I correct? I think I saw that somewhere.
I think so.
Gary Bond can't be here because of business commitment?
It's store.
Yeah, store, all right. And then we have, if you look, I'm going to take a little bird walk here, if you look at the appointed positions, that's where we're looking to interview some folks to see if they might be interested in those positions, or maybe not now, but in the future. Mr. Baum is the second time here, so sometimes the first time isn't always the charm. But how about if we have you come up and just have a seat, Phil?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I think we asked you these questions before, but just give us a shot as to why you're interested in volunteering for the borough.
I've lived here, lived here five years, owned a home here for six years, and like I said before, I come from New Jersey and New York City, and coming to Hanover was a bit of a culture shock, but a welcome one. I just love it. I live on York Street, 201 York, so I'm walking distance to the downtown. My wife and I were here all the time coming downtown, shopping all the different places. I just recently became a partner in Cobb 51, the art studio, so I do that as well. I just love the town and just want to be a part of it.
That's great, and you're available in evenings for meetings and that kind of thing?
Yes.
And any particular interests you have, and you indicated interest in the appeals, what is it, the appeals?
Zoning.
Zoning, Appeals Board, appeals board, is that where it is? Yeah, the code appeals board.
I've been in property management, I know I don't look that old, but for 30 years now. Started out in residential, now I do mostly commercial and industrial. I've got lots of experience in all this stuff, and I, again, just want to be a part of the community here and help out.
You sort of already did share one positive thing about the borough that you're interested, anything else you'd like to share, any positive things, maybe one positive thing you see us doing?
Well, one positive thing I see you doing. I mean, the downtown is starting to fill in. I guess when I first got here, there's a lot of empty storefronts, there's still a couple empty, but it's starting to fill in. Some new renovations coming to the old Montgomery workplace, that's starting to look good. I'm waiting to see what's going in downstairs. It just, it's starting to become alive. There's a lot more community involvement in the Saturday strolls that they have, you know, and the new Santa's Cabin and the tree across the street, those are great locations for those. So it's just, I see a lot of people in the town actually, you know, coming together.
Coming from New York and New Jersey, you would see changes, I mean, there's big stuff there.
Oh, yeah.
Little things here.
Yep.
Any questions for Phil?
No, I'm glad he came back.
I'm glad, too, he came back.
Thank you.
It's a good thing. Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Bill Markle, want to come up to the table and we'll ask you questions as well? We'll interrogate you, too.
Good evening, everyone.
Want to give us a little bit of your background?
Oh, wow, well, I was born and raised in Hanover, attended Eichelberger High School, graduated in '62, joined the military, Air Force, spent five years there, discharged as a staff sergeant, got married, had two beautiful kids, worked with the J.F. Roarball Company for 43 years. Roarball Company down there in Wilson Avenue, they made wooden products and whatnot. I volunteered myself many, many, many years. I helped coach baseball for both Hanover Borough and West Manheim. I'm currently the Secretary of the Local Veterans Group here in town, AMVETS up in Broadway, I've been doing that for the last 25 years. And I also volunteered for EPAC, Eichelberger Performing Arts Center. I just currently moved from West Manheim into the Hanover Borough, I currently reside at the McGeilster Apartments, and I'm getting tired looking at four walls, so I've got to do something, so that's basically.
So already are volunteering, so that's good. Any, your evenings are available for meetings?
Yes, yes. I work Tuesdays, second Tuesday and fourth Tuesday, I have meetings there at the AMVETS Center.
Okay, and could you share with us one good thing you think the borough's doing that's good for our community?
Well, several, I mean, there's a lot. You just want one?
Well, we like your good stuff. That's a good thing, good to the borough. That's one good thing.
Well, I think the borough's doing one fantastic job on the water system. I think the Hanover Borough has probably the best in York County water system, and continually improving with the Shepherd &amp; Myers. I'd say it's probably one of the best water systems in Pennsylvania. Plus, I agree with Phil when he is saying, renovating downtown, the new stores coming in finally, and like I said, I reside at the McGeilster, they did a fantastic job there, and the restaurant they just put in, if none of you folks visited that restaurant yet, I advise you to try to do so, it's fantastic. But just the downtown, trying to rejuvenating that, I think they're doing a fantastic job.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay. Looks like the next thing we have to do, Tammy Hare withdrew her interest because her job responsibilities changed, so then we'll go on to Finance and Personnel. Zoning Officer, we need to appoint Chris Miller to position of Borough Zoning Officer. We need a motion to do that?
Uh huh.
Thank you, Chris, a second?
Second.
Charlene, thank you. All in favor, and it could be saying aye?
Aye.
That motion opposed? That motion carries? We're looking at the appointed positions, then. If you take a look, the little asterisk indicates the incumbent in those positions, and we have two people who are interested in filling any open position. Anyone want to start the conversation?
Going which one now?
What?
Going what?
Are you talking about all of them?
So we're looking at each one. I mean, obviously, it looks like Brian is the incumbent there, and I guess he's willing to stay. And then we look at the next one, Stormwater Authority, I think Janine would like to stay on there, and the Police Pension Committee, Mr. Riley, and the Police Pension Committee, also Mr. Good and Mr. Bream, and then the Zoning Hearing Board, we have, let's have an opening on there, and then Sewage Enforcement Officer, and moving on down there. Looks like we have an opening then for perhaps the Zoning Hearing Board, and perhaps the River Recreation, and then we need a council appointee to do the alternate Hanover Fire and Rescue Commission.
Can I make a comment on the alternate sewage enforcement officer? Has anybody checked in with Dean Schultz?
I did.
He's still alive and kicking and able to do it?
Yeah, I called him.
Okay.
The secretary responded, yeah.
Yeah, because I know he shut his firm down, but I knew he was still practicing. So I just wanted to make sure he was still.
She said he would be honored to do it.
I think he's 85.
Is he really?
He's, he's 30.
Does this person attend meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's just, he's just.
Okay.
Life begins at 80.
Comments?
So, so you're saying we have vacancies, where?
So it looks like, well, we have.
Who had the picks up for zoning?
The zoning, because someone there, his time is up, I guess Gary Bond's three years is up, and any of those other people, I mean, I guess they all indicated they're willing to serve, but you could replace any of those people if you so feel the need, am I correct, Dory?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what are we doing here again? You're going to clarify this a little bit more for me.
Okay, so if you look at that chart.
Gary Bond, or Gary, Gary Bond is the incumbent.
Yeah, and his three years are up.
Right, so you have two other people vying for that position besides Gary, correct?
Yes, okay, and any of those positions, you can put somebody in any of those positions, can't you? I mean, you could, right? I mean, even those people indicate they'd serve again, am I correct?
Yes. Yes, they're all.
They're volunteers?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
All right, okay. So if you, if you wanted, so we're looking at the possibility of finding someplace, so far we have Mr. Baum, who is interested in volunteering, and Mr. Markle's interested in volunteering, so we're looking to see if there's a spot for either one of those two or both, that's what we're looking for.
Wasn't Tammy Hare, didn't she, didn't she step back from that position?
Yes, she, she did.
All right, let's make sure I'm on top of everything here.
Just today, she.
Okay, so there's no one to fill that position at this time?
Correct.
Okay.
We have an opening on the River Recreation Board, then, am I correct, Dory?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then we need a council appointee for the commission, and then our Property Maintenance Code's appeal, Phil's name's already there.
And the Recreation Board is actually a five-year commitment?
Yes.
That's pretty long.
Longest we got.
It's the way it's written in the borough code.
Oh, yeah.
I put Philip's name there at Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board because I think it was George Karyasas was willing to step down.
Right. And Phil's interested in that.
Okay.
So are we okay with that? Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
I just.
Background.
Miss Vice President, I'd just like to weigh in on two faults here. One being the stormwater. I don't have reservations about current counselor, Frances, performing the job function, but noting that she's going to be going off of council going forward. The stormwater started with Slisher Sholtest, three counselors, I believe, and if we reappoint her as a non-counselor, then we're down to one council position.
Is that you?
That would be me.
Okay.
Your term's coming up, right?
Yeah, and I would, I would just encourage counsel to think about replacing that with a counselor, and seeing if maybe Counselor, current Counselor Frances would look to go elsewhere. And the second thing is, is obviously the Hanover Fire and Rescue Commission alternate has to be a council rep. has to be a council representative, so.
Well, who's not here? Sometimes, sometimes when you don't come, you get appointed.
Tim, would that be something you'd be interested in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You want to be on the fire?
Yes.
You want to be on the hot seat?
Oh, great, thanks, Tim.
Do it.
I don't mind hearing people's votes.
I love it.
Okay. So go back to that stormwater authority again. You think we should.
Yeah, is there someone in the room as a counselor who could step up? I just, because at a certain point in time going forward, I will either cycle off of that or cycle through the chair of that. And it, given its intimate, closely connected relationship with the borough, I feel it strongly that it'd be a counselor to take this position.
Someone who sits at this table?
Yeah, someone who's part of the council going forward as of January one, 2022.
So are you saying, Bill, that you prefer to have two members of council, one of the two members of council on the stormwater authority?
That would be my preference, yeah. Because it started with three and now we'll be down to one.
So you're still on, so we're looking for another council member, okay?
And then eventually I will be replaced, so, yeah. We only have, if we only have one council representative and there's also an imperfect world that I can't make every meeting, it would be important to have.
Okay.
Another council.
I mean, I can do it, but we'll be shifting up at the beginning of the year to some of the other committees.
Gary, are you interested? You can say no, I mean.
Let me tell you, let me tell you, it's, it's some of the most rewarding shortly well-run meetings that we have, in my opinion, and it is currently slated for every other month, Dory?
Yes.
So it's not a, and it's typically a under-half hour meeting every other month, of which I believe in 2021, approximately. At least two meetings have been canceled, to my knowledge, so.
Second?
Yeah. It sounded like a yes.
Was Ray Hoover on that?
No.
Ray never served on that. Wasn't he on something else?
Economic Development.
Downtown Economic.
Economic Committee.
You can do both.
Yeah.
Do as many as you like.
I think I'd rather do the stormwater one really, if I had a choice.
Stormwater?
I would.
Okay.
That's, that's put Gary's name on that list.
Okay, Gary for stormwater, okay. And we have Phil for, for the Hanover Recreation Board, and we have the zoning hearing board. Is Gary an alternate on there or is Gary a member? Gary Bond, he's not the alternate, is he?
No, he's a member.
There is an alternate, am I correct? There already is an alternate.
Yes, we have an alternate.
Okay, all right, okay. I was just seeing, maybe, all right.
Just speaking out loud, Mr. Baum, you've said you're okay with the zoning commitment?
Right.
Okay?
But I think he's in property.
No, he's property.
Property, yeah.
He's the property code.
Oh, sorry, yeah, the property.
Yeah, he's okay with that one.
Yep, yep, yep. So then that could leave us Mr. Markle for zoning hearing board.
Would you be interested in that? Zoning hearing board?
That's where his name's listed. Is that, is that where your primary interest is?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Or recreation, as a coach.
Yeah. Well, we, if, if Mr. Markle's accepting of recreation and Mr. Bond, which we, it's not here to ask if he's accepting of zoning, we, if we, I think we saw the problem if we put Mr. Markle in at rec and leave Mr. Bond at zoning, then it seems like the only thing we have to come up with would be economic, the last one, economic development.
I think Oliver's working on that.
And we're working on that.
Yeah, okay. We go with that then? What's that again? Tell me again.
I propose this. So from the top down, we'd have O'Neil, Greenhold, Riley Jr., Good, Bream, Bond, Stanball, Schultz, Baum, Lockard, Cress, Dehoff, Markle, and TBD.
Okay, go with that? Is there a second to that?
Second.
All okay, ready to go by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to both of you. Thank you. Thank you for your interest. It's a good start, thank you.
I have to be on two boards because I, I was vice president of Economic Development for the Plainfield, New Jersey Chamber of Commerce for six years, so I could do.
I'll pass that information on to Mr. Ward, who's the president of the Economic Development Corporation.
Probably.
I will do that.
Sounds like you may have gotten your TBD taken care of.
Okay, maybe.
Your pay doubles, you know that.
Yeah. All right. Moving on to the 2022 budget, we're asking for consideration motion to approve the resolution adopting budgets for fiscal year 2022 for all Hanover funds. Any questions? Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, it'll be forwarded on to council. Also, we have a 2022 tax levy, consideration motion to approve resolution levying taxes for the year 2022. Motion?
Will move.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And we have not altered taxes since 2015, just in case anybody's out there listening, just so you know. All right. Next, we have consideration of motion approving the 2022 liability and workers' comp coverage at a cost of three thousand eight hundred.
Three hundred forty.
Okay, yeah.
You can't read my writing, I'm sorry.
Oh, three hundred eighty-four, three hundred eighty-four, I thought that was a comma, I thought it was three hundred eighty-four thousand, it couldn't nearly be that much money. Three hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-three cents is the additional amount, am I correct?
It's three hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-one total.
Oh, total.
Which is a three-point-seven-six percent increase. The increase is due to workers' comp experience, so that's, it's based on the number of accidents and increased payroll. It doesn't track with inflation. So it's actually a very good result that we have here.
Well, workman's comp was through the roof. On the increase. On the increase. Percent-wise.
It was sixteen thousand and it was based on an increase in the number of workers' accidents.
Okay.
Two years ago, so it's always a two-year lag.
So two years ago, what's our, what's our safety rating now?
Well, our experience mod now is point seven out of one, so.
Right.
Okay.
So are we going down?
We're going up.
As far as going, I mean, so we're.
We have more accidents.
That's my, that's my point.
Takes a lot to go down.
What are we doing, what are we doing as far as safety to get that number where our workman comp's not going up at?
Chris Rolke is working in that whole area of water sewer and cooperating with AJ to develop a safety program for, for example, trench safety. We haven't had a program on that, which is interesting that we haven't, as well as, you know, that whole menu that you have with people that work in, on the street. Firefighters, that, that's another issue entirely that we're working on and talking to the chief about.
So we don't have a formal safety program?
We do not.
Okay, that's on the goal, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Can't they assist you?
We're doing trenching, that's wonderful.
Workers' conference charts assist you with the insurance program?
Yes, they would like it very much to.
Yeah.
Yeah, however, Chris Rolke has taken it on.
Okay.
Because he saw that need as soon as he walked in the door.
Good.
The best we can do is hope it stays stable. I've never seen it go down. But.
Oh, no, it can.
Really?
Oh, yeah. If your safety rating goes down, your, your cost goes down.
Yes. Yes, correct. However, we haven't had, despite the fact that we don't have a safety program, we don't have a lot of accidents and haven't had a lot of accidents. We've had some recently, however.
But you should have a discount for having a safety program or negotiate a discount.
I'm not sure if we have a discount. I know in, in here, I haven't heard that we have one. Do you know if we have a discount for a safety program?
We don't right now, but we have talked with the, with Selective about developing a program and they're helping with initiative to get a program.
I mean, just documenting, tail dock, tailgate talks and, I mean, that's what construction companies do, we should operate that way.
I need a motion to approve that.
Sue motion.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and moves to council. And the borough fee schedule, consideration motion to approve resolution revising the scheduled fees for permits, licenses and services provided by the borough, effective January one, 2022.
One question.
Question?
Yes, please.
On page two of the fee schedule, these were for permits and licenses. It has down for the meter testing fee in the borough is $100 and for the township for out of the borough, it's $10. I would really like that explained to me when I was reading it off of my computer.
Okay. Somebody explain that?
Page two.
Was it page two?
Yes. At the bottom.
I, I see that and we will explain it before you need to vote on it next week.
Yeah, because I'm trying to understand why the borough would be paying $90 more.
It may be, do you know, Dory, or it may be an error?
Probably something with PUC.
That's what I said.
What was that?
Probably has something to do with PUC.
It what?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, we don't know the answer to that.
But we need to.
That's a lot of news.
Yes, we will find out that answer.
Find out that answer and have that answer for us by next week.
It looks like an error.
It looks like an error?
To me, it looks like an error.
I certainly hope so.
But you never know, there's a Luisa Baxter.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the, getting me the answer.
Thank you for finding that.
Any other comments about the fees?
Eric, on the, the billing rate schedules for plan review, are those borough costs or is that for a third-party review cost?
It's set up for both. Last year, we completely overhauled the program of being able to compensate our department for internal plan reviews of land development subdivision plans, but we do also keep Gannett on standby if we get into a matter that might have a traffic study or geotechnical or something that might get a bit beyond what our department can handle. But through the year of 2021 to date, we've not actually used them for any plan reviews. We've done everything in-house and fully recouped all of our costs for doing so.
I was just curious, because all the staff categories would seem as though they're all consulting.
It used to be more relevant when they were reviewing our plan reviews, but as I've been here now and refined the program, we're doing all of it in-house. So it's not as relevant. The MPC requires that we do that, but that's why you see all the breakdown.
I just didn't know if we were doing more outsourced plan review on the, on the consultant rates, because those are looking more like consultant rates.
Yeah. Try not to give it away, I like to do that work.
We have a motion based upon, based upon the fact that we would get that specific information prior to our voting next week. Are you okay with that? If we move that on?
Yes, as long as we have an answer or there was a typo, which I'm hoping.
We'll hope it's that.
I have one other comment.
Please.
On the seasonal rates.
What page is that?
I don't know, I just printed out when I, I didn't print out all four.
Seasonal.
Yeah, seasonal part-time employees.
No, that's, that's later in the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking.
We're still on fees.
Okay. Then I'm good.
Good?
I'll bring it up.
Good for right now, I'll bring it up later. We did have a motion and a second, didn't we?
I think we did.
We did, yes.
No, we did not.
We did not?
We did not.
No second.
No second.
No, I said no second.
Thank you, okay. We have a motion and a second.
Chris and Darlene, okay.
Yes, right.
Come on, Dory, keep going.
Okay, well, all in favor of that motion to approve the resolution revising the scheduled fees and permits, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and we'll get that additional information by next week. Thank you. All right. Moving on the agenda, looking at compensation of health insurance coverage for non-union employees, consideration of a motion to approve the resolution setting compensation in health insurance contributions for certain borough employees for 2022. We did have that discussion prior to this meeting. I'm the wrong thing. Do you want to explain that to us, man?
I'm going to pitch that one.
Or, I'm sorry, Amy. Could you explain that to us?
What was your question?
The one on the motion to approve the resolution setting compensation in health insurance contributions, what is that, what is that percentage?
For health insurance?
Yeah.
Seven and a half percent.
Okay.
So it's currently seven, it's going up half a percentage.
Right.
This year.
Any questions about that? We're striving to move upward. Yes?
Yes.
Any questions? Do we have a motion on that, please?
Sue motion.
Thank you. A second?
Sorry.
Thank you, Gary. All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, thank you.
Excuse me, do you have questions on the seasonal employees, Mr. Heckberg?
I did.
That was part of that.
Oh, was that part of that?
Of G, and I wanted to be sure your questions were asked.
Yeah, so, so last summer, last year, we were not able to fill these roles, right? Most of, like the recreational and stuff.
They, they were, and last year, the playground supervisors, or last year on the resolution, playground and baseball, all were at the minimum wage with the adjustment for returners. baseball, all were at the minimum wage with the adjustment for returners. This year, you'll see the playground was pulled out, and those wages are a little bit higher. That's because we weren't able to fill the positions at the minimum wage. So we went with the $10 an hour for those seasonal playground positions with a program through the YMCA. So that's why those are broke out. And that's why they have some additional requirements for safety reasons at the playgrounds.
Okay. Let's see if we can fill them.
Moving on then to the.
The audit.
The audit. Yeah, the audit. Yeah, right. You want to explain a little bit about the audit?
Yes, as you know, we had a firm. And when Mr. Miller left, the firm doubled its fee to $54,000 a year. And as a result of that, we declined to go forward with that firm, and I issued an RFP. We have received three proposals. They are significantly less than the $54,000. And we're in the process of vetting them with our accounting firm. And we'll come back to you next week, we hope, with a recommendation. Process went much better than I expected. I was a little panicked when we didn't have an auditor, but it looks like with the help of our accounting services, as well as that the firms came forward, I think we're going to be in good shape, both financially and as far as the quality of the service. So next week, we'll have the answer.
Thank you for finding someone less expensive.
Yes.
It's a good thing. Very good thing.
It's always a good thing.
Okay. The next one is consideration of motion to adopt the ordinance entitled fixing salaries compensation bonds and certain duties of borough officials and sets the mayor's salary at zero compensation for 2022. And I think you have that information in your packet. Any questions about that? Motion?
Motion.
Motion. Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll move.
Can I bring something to discussion now?
Sorry?
On this?
Sure.
Not on this, but just in general. You know, the mayor does represent our borough and does travel. And, you know, so it's at her cost at this point. I think we should at least cover.
She travels outside the borough?
She goes to events and other things and so on, but there's a lot of her expense time on it. We don't travel as much, right, to these things, but she represents the borough and goes to events. I think we should at least cover reimbursements.
We do cover some, but not like, we haven't covered mileage. We haven't suggested that, but we do cover lunch and fees, that sort of thing.
Right.
Should we offer more maybe, and be more specific and formal about it? I think she just.
Thanks, Melissa. I'd like to weigh in.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we reimburse or compensate employees for mileage? Do we have? If so, do we have a resolution setting the mileage rate?
We do reimburse employees for mileage. I believe the ordinance is set to be the PA state, so that it changes as it's changed by the state.
We'll find it as well. Get familiar with it.
Sure, your point would be to give them.
Rembursements. Yeah. Especially if your costs what they are now.
I don't know if that's something we can just do now.
No, I'm just bringing it up for discussion.
Yeah, we can do it right now.
It's just something. I just wanted to put it on the conversation.
Yeah, we can take care of that. Thank you for raising that question.
And then if we knew the compensation rate, meaning the mileage rate too, that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Usually federal level.
Yes.
All right. We had a first and a second on that, so now we need to take a vote. All in favor of that ordinance, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we're looking at, and we had this discussion before, vote to approve an ordinance to amend Chapter 16 powers and duties of the borough manager to allow for the borough manager to ascend and designate to meetings of council and committees. And I think that our previous discussion, Dory had mentioned, rightly so, that there are times that she needs to come, and she will come. You know, there are times that doesn't mean every other meeting she's not gonna come. She's gonna know that there are times she needs to come. Do you have anything you wanted to share on that, Tim?
Hey, Joe.
Okay. Any questions about that? All right. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And next is the classification compensation study. We are aware of that. I'm sorry.
I don't get a motion in second. I don't think we do.
I motion.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
I will now.
You will?
I guess.
All right.
So lock for the second?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Do we need to vote again?
No.
Okay, thanks. All right. Okay. So then we're on the classification study. You're aware of that study, and this vote is just to accept the study. It's used as a guide to take a look at our non-union salaries for each of the different positions. Any questions about that? Seeing none, do I have a motion to vote to accept that study? We're not approving the study. We're taking the study, and we're gonna look at it.
It's okay.
You got a motion? Thank you, Chris. Dory, thank you very much.
You're nice. Go for it.
What?
This is nice. Go for it.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And the draft work plan for committees. Ma'am?
Yes. I'm not asking for any action tonight. However, as those of you who are veterans on Borough Council know, every two years, Borough Council reorganizes, votes its Borough Council President, approves officers such as the Borough Manager and the Solicitor. And after that, Borough Council President then determines what the committees will do. And it is framed by what's in your code and who's on those committees. So in order to get us started and get a good start next year, I took our goals, and I put something together just for your review so that you'd have a good start. And it looks like this, and this is a menu of the high priority goals that each committee could be assigned if Borough Council President so chooses. And then the second set shows all of those things that are high priority, that the department heads are working on, and in red, it shows those things that could go to committees. It's a start. Certainly, as you all know, as we do, as we go through our committee meetings, many other things come to committees. But we do need a framework, and so this is a draft for you to work with and do as you wish with it.
This will be a draft for the next council to look at when we get the new votes on.
Actually, it goes to the council president.
Okay.
But he will, then, he or she will then seek approval of council.
And obviously, this is subject to change as the committees meet throughout the year. Questions or comments from anybody?
The only one was the refugee study not identified as part of public facilities.
Yes.
In the goals.
Where'd that go? I think it could go either to public facilities. I think my preference is that it be a financial study. And I think that would make more sense out of it, but we can put it in either location, and that's up to council to decide where it wants to put it.
Because at last conversation, it was the only activity that the borough has, and it's under AJ's lead. So that's why we're thinking public works and facilities.
Well, he and I talked, he and I talked and thought of it more as a finance project where it would be a finance study that would be done outside of his, he would work with such a person, but it would be a finance study that he would work with. It's, it could go in public works, or it could go in finance. Either is fine, but that's how we envisioned it the last we talked.
See, you're viewing it as a finance. I'm viewing it as a service.
Oh, you're looking at it as a.
Service study.
A service study.
Because based on the.
I think it's both, though.
Well, it is.
Yeah, it is. Finance.
But the service drives finance.
Yes, so we could do it either way, and I don't really have a preference, except that this is the last way we envisioned it. And also, he's pretty overloaded, and we thought maybe the finance director, the finance director would be a.
Well, I'm not saying that they wouldn't be involved. It's, yeah, we can decide.
Yeah, you can decide. This is just to give you something to work with.
I was just looking at the list of the goals, and it wasn't.
Do you want to sort of write it in somewhere?
I don't know if we have to make that decision to not.
I don't think we do.
No, this is January, February.
I just wanted, yeah, I don't want it to be forgotten. It's just where it goes. We can discuss it.
And keep in mind, as you see, it is a draft.
Right, right, right. No, I get it.
It's, I'm handing it off to you as a working document for you to make decisions, just so that you'd have something to work with and didn't have to start from scratch.
Okay, so we'll have that. Any comments about that? Okay. Next, moving on to the York County Safety Collaborative, vote to execute a fiscal sponsor agreement between Logos and York County Chiefs of Police Association. No, there is a chief. Do you want to share that information about that with us?
Yes, so basically, we have to seek an authorization from council just to sign on behalf of the police department to join the collaborative. And in doing so, it basically will, in the future, allow the police department to access funds, which is the purpose of the collaborative, to basically, this has been a work in progress with the County Chiefs of Police Association. They joined Logos Works, who view the financial driver here, who will accept donations, et cetera, and put it, you know, into an account where the York County Police Departments can access that money for grants, for training, equipment, et cetera. There's no cost to sign on, and that gives us access in the future towards those monies if we need it. If we don't sign on, then we don't get access in the future to those monies. Attorney Schultze says, reviewed the paperwork. He spoke with Attorney Hawes, with Stock and Leader, and has signed off on it.
So it's free?
Essentially. Until it gets to the point, I think when you get to the point where you apply for monies, there's obviously.
Yeah, right.
But to sign on, to be available to get monies, it doesn't cost us anything.
It's like a new thing, or has it always been around?
So it's been on the radar for the County Chiefs for several years.
Oh.
So in the last year, they've really picked it up, created, up the committee, got in partnership with Logos, worked out the lego ease with Stock and Leader, and this is where we're at.
All right. Any questions for the chief? Sounds good. Do I have a motion to vote to execute that fiscal sponsor agreement?
Second.
Who is it? Who is it? Who's?
Chief.
Tim. Okay, got it.
Go.
Get that, Dory? Okay. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Dos Alley Conversion to approve the community developed block grant contract for $421,000. Eric, talk to us.
This is not new. You had acted on this some time ago, allowing me to submit to York County for CDBG funding of the section of alley directly adjacent to the borough parking facility here. We were fortunate, we won that grant. That grant is in the amount of $421,000. And for now, what you're doing is basically authorizing us to go ahead and get the contract paperwork signed so that we have access to that money. That 421 is not all of 2021 or 2022 spend. It is phased out actually over four to five years, moving through design, utilities, and things like that. So.
But this isn't for construction?
It has construction money in it, yes, for one piece. Yep.
That's a lot of land over 421.
I have a lot of utilities hanging on the buildings that have to be adjusted.
Well, no, I'm not saying that's not, I'm thinking it's a little low on the construction side.
It might be, but it gets us out of the gate and get started. Once we get the concept on, which is the first piece, then we'll have a better understanding of what all is involved as far as the costs.
So I don't mean to throw a curveball here.
Let's have it.
Okay. I hope you can hit it. The initial thought for the Dos Alley was originally, the Montgomery Wards building was gonna have commercial on the first floor, including the side.
Correct.
So that was going to be a vacated alley and become space for restaurants and stuff.
Correct.
Now that that developer is not doing that.
Yes.
It seems to me as though we're going to have this beautiful alley and none of the commercial activities that we were intending or thought we would have from that developer who's backed out of that agreement. Therefore, is that money locked in the Dos Alley, or is it any alley that we could then promote that's actually gonna help businesses that are bringing people to the downtown?
So that money is programmed based on an application that was specific to Dos Alley. We did pitch that. We did certainly make the county aware that it was not set up for the businesses, as you mentioned, as had been part of the original proposal, and we're still ultimately able to get approval for that. I believe the thought is that, you know, we can still make this sort of the pilot project. If you'll remember, this is one piece of the ring that goes around the downtown core. The goal was to try and create a sort of ring that can, you can get on it without having to jump into your car and move around the downtown borough safely and have various amenities and things like that. Obviously, we would love to have the businesses and things engaged in that as sort of interface points. I'm not saying that we still won't get that. The back of the building along Dos Alley is still unaccounted for as anything. I have heard art studio, yoga studio, and other things, so there's still discussion that maybe we didn't get the middle piece, but we will definitely have the front, and we could potentially have the back. So we still may salvage something out of that.
I'm just not sure it should be our first part of the ring. Now that they've changed what they are proposing.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that Bank Lane or somewhere where we're having real activities.
The nice thing that's happening.
Versus a commercial development that's not.
Is, I think what's going to happen for the borough is, as we move this forward as a CDBG project, I think you're going to see Bank Lane get legs under it and kind of move on its own, even though it's not a CDBG thing. HEDC has their eyes sort of set on some of that as well. So I think what we do in this one could be sort of replicated there, even though they might have different funding sources for them, and ultimately still get us to, hey, this is one that has a lot of things we can do, you know, the restaurants, the bars, and things like that. And maybe the Dos Alley one isn't as engaged in those things initially, but I still think they could.
What about the theater side?
The theater side one is a little bit more tricky, because obviously, the theater is a huge question mark, and then certainly, we have the mental health facilities that are on their side. They do have access and door and stuff, but that's not typically something we would engage off of a green alley to get into those facilities. So, yeah, we have that kind of stretched through there. That, as you look at that vision, is likely to become more something, we clean it up, we light it, we give it those amenities, so that you can safely move from there to get to the next piece that may have more of those things you want.
I mean, I know this has been a long burn, and a lot has changed in that burn, but, you know, I'm for the alley project. I'm not so sure I'm for that alley project, if that makes sense. And that's my opinion. I mean, that's other folks. I think if we could spend that money somewhere that actually connects with the more activity that's going on.
Well, it was approved with the Dos Alley as part of the approval.
One of the things that we did predicate this application on was that we said to the developer, look, we had counted on those stores and other things, and as sort of a consolation prize, if you will, they said, all right, well, we'll throw in building the concept free of charge, sort of a pro bono thing, that they'll help lay out some of that initial stuff to be, you know, where does it go, and how does it look, and the widths and stormwater and things like that, ultimately getting us to a position then that we can go out to bid for, you know, the preliminary engineering and things like that. So it is, it is specific in that sense, in that I don't know that developers are gonna say, well, I'll help you develop over on Bank Lane, but they are willing to donate those services for this piece now. The other interest that I think in this piece now is, if you'll notice, that piece of the alley has been shut off. It's been shut off for six to eight months. The community has slowly become accepting of that that's shut off, you know? We're not seeing people mistakenly turning into it and running into barriers or anything. So if we're going to do something with that alley, and we move that towards something that is more pedestrian-friendly and less vehicular-friendly, this is probably the time to do that, because we kind of have already set that stage with people as far as they're accepting that that alley is just not one that we cut up and down to zip around the downtown.
Eric, that is Dos Alley.
Yes.
If we follow through with it.
Yes.
Okay, and this is the beginning for us. We could use that for a special events promotion. Say, let me bring something up. We're promoting, we're having, I don't know, Brew Fest Day or whatever, but in the process also, could we not have somebody come to us and say, could I, I have this great big ice cream truck? Could I bring it in, locate it? We're gonna have benches sitting around, right? Could, would we allow to, would we allow a vendor to come in for that particular day to promote something, something special that would coincide with whatever we're holding downtown, and just take a small portion of that? And yet, the people could use that to sit and relax and.
Yes, yes, and a small no.
Yes, yes, and no.
So the yes is, you absolutely want those kind of things. That's where I think the borough needs to go with this, is you need to drive those things like the food truck vendors and things into those spaces, because that's what gives people who are using those facilities something to do in addition to, and I think that's an[1525.31] using those facilities something to do in addition to, and I think that's an important part, in addition to the other restaurants. Because we don't, we want them to sort of work together. We don't want to pull a bunch of food trucks in the downtown and then, you know, sort of alienate our other brick and mortar stuff. So we got to find a way that that kind of works together. But special events, to your point, yeah, we could pull in, maybe it's an ice cream truck that's not offered in other things and they could sit down there. I don't know that I want them necessarily parked inside of that space, but we have the parking lot. And maybe there's a way we can use the parking lot as an interface for those trucks. But to your point, the bigger yes is, yeah, you have people, the goal is to have the alley become sort of a linear parkway and less of this nasty looking road that just kind of connects two bigger roads. You want that to be something that draws people in, allows them to move around, but gives them that sort of refuge also that they can sit down, they can take, you know, a couple minutes out of their day and sit there and read a book or, you know, just enjoy the sunshine or whatever.
The relaxation of it, yes. And you have the ice cream parlor two doors away, basically. And so I'm thinking springtime, summertime, bringing children, starting to incorporate. I see a lot of adult activity in Center Square. I love the idea of.
You'd have a librarian come.
Yeah, or somebody coming and saying, you know, I have this little merry-go-round, small, small for children, you know. And that day, maybe they just set up in a little corner somewhere and people can just lull around and get, you know, whatever they want. Go over, sit down, relax, read, as you said, talk with their friends, you know. I think you have to have places where relaxation begins in the downtown area because even there you're going to promote all this business.
Right.
Olsters get tired too. So, so it's just a nice place to relax and want to go.
What you're talking about is very much in line with the vision for the alley.
Okay.
That's the short answer.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I think Chuck's, Chuck's point is valid in that it would have been nice to have some of that interface of commercial activities along there.
Why did we allow that to happen? I mean, I thought that was part of the deal for the longest time that the first floor was going to be commercial. I mean.
Eric, yeah, I wasn't here, so I wasn't part of the discussion or the agreements and things.
It seems like somebody just sidestep, just sidestep the whole thing and just, you know, did whatever they wanted to do. I mean, and out of all the projects in downtown Headover, that one's taken forever. I mean, in comparison to all the rest of the projects, it just seems like, I don't know.
There is, there is a lot of frustration on.
It just seems like it was, it was impressive.
Kind of a bait and switch.
Do those folks at development have to make some sort of a financial commitment as what they're going to commit if they're going to help us do Doss Alley? I mean, they sort of backed out of it and you said they would help, but do we know how much they're going to help with?
Well, they're, they're going to do all of the layout, the concepts, the base maps, like all that stuff they're working on. And then ultimately we'll decide if we want to talk to them about moving to the preliminary engineering, which would be the next phase where you start to actually put numbers to things and designing things. You know, maybe they'll come to the table and do that at some greatly reduced rate. We haven't had that conversation yet.
I guess I see Chris's point. I just thought that was going to happen and then he just backed out. I guess they can just back out. I mean.
I don't know if that's truly the case because with the hardness of the COVID that we've had, restaurants were intimidated, first of all, to find out that the profits that they anticipated are not now going to be there. And I think that you're dealing with a individual and company, corporation, whatever, that realizes that the profit is not there at this point. You know, they could change their mind.
Well, you assume restaurant. That was, it was a lot of shock.
I think the restaurant was an absolutely fabulous idea. It would have been a, a restaurant that would have been a calling card, you know, for the downtown and being that that's not at the present. But like you said, there's opportunities to come to the table for further discussions. And if we don't proceed, we don't, you don't want, that grant is ours. And I think we ought to use it to the best of our ability for the improvement downtown.
I was thinking along the side there were going to be little boutique shops, not necessarily restaurants, but sort of little shops that.
That would even be nice.
It's just supposed to be commercial.
Or something that you wouldn't normally find elsewhere that could be placed there. But yeah, I agree. But I don't think this is the end of it. I think it's just the beginning for us.
And I didn't mean to spin this that way. I was just saying that the original concept three years ago.
Right.
Was in the, as it was laid out, is completely different now. All I was saying is.
Yes.
If we're going to do the alley, you know, Green Lane areas around it, is that the best one to start with now that the concept has changed? That's all I was saying.
Right, right. And I understood what you were saying.
We had a lot of discussion here.
I.
He said curveball.
I said it was a curveball. It was meant for him and wasn't meant for all of you.
Oh, okay.
My recommendation would certainly be that, understanding those points, I would, I would strongly recommend that you would move forward with this one, just because of some of the other pieces. This is our first CDBG we pulled down for this particular type of project. So I want to kind of execute it very cleanly for them so that I can go back to them again and ask for more money, which is.
We'd like to hear, Eric. That's good.
So Eric, what you're saying is it gets our foot in the door.
Absolutely. And this is very much a part of a bigger discussion that, that you guys are having as you're looking at your ARPA money, as you're looking at what priority projects HEDC is going to be taking on. It fits perfectly into all of that.
Thank you.
There's no way that this is going to become an issue if they see that, if they see that, that that hasn't been used as, that the, because we sold the whole idea originally it was supposed to be a commercial space. That's not going to get us in any trouble, is it?
With CDBG?
I mean, and the grant money.
Absolutely not. No, because when we sold them, I didn't sell them on CDBG with the idea that that was stores.
Right.
Okay. They just didn't want us to get in trouble.
So we need a motion to approve that community block.
Second.
Okay. All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Eric. And then we're looking at, oh, you're still on the hot seat for the rental inspection program. And we did have that information in our packet. We had it last month and we were supposed to take a look at that as homework for tonight. Do you want to give us a brief summary or do you want us to just?
I'll give you a super brief summary. So you had asked me to take a look at your program. I came back to you and said that your rental program, if you change nothing, has some structural issues to it in the way that we collect data, the way that we enforce how we collect data and what we do with that data. That is absent any discussion about inspections or anything like that. That is an issue which I will be fixing and Chris is working with me on that because he's built rental programs in other communities. What is in front of you is a discussion on whether or not you want to take the rental program as you have it now, which is literally just collecting names, number of occupants, and emergency contacts. And you want to expand that to some sort of a greater good. Do you want inspections? And if so, are they life safety inspections? Are they property maintenance inspections? That's in your purview to advise me what you want. And then I need to do more research for you on that. But at this point in time, if you do nothing at all, I'm still, what I've seen behind the curtain, I need to change because it's not effective and we need to use it better.
So you're saying now's the time?
Well, we have the iWork platform, so it's perfect because iWork can manage the rental thing. So I've actually been working and Amy gave me a big glob of data that we put into iWork and we're cleaning all that up. So that's going to happen regardless. I just, I had been tasked by you guys to bring you other options that you might do, picking up a conversation you must have had prior to me. And so I'm here to carry that out, whatever you would like.
But that's just data collection? No enforcement and no licensing?
No, I already have the data for who, where the rentals are and a program that we're going to execute regardless. Because you already have an ordinance on the books. You have an ordinance that says the obligation is there for a landlord to give you the names of all their tenants, how many people are staying there and emergency contacts. That, that happened in 1984.
But that's all we get?
So that's all you get.
We get no inspection?
It's a one-page ordinance. It's not, doesn't have a lot of enforcement teeth. I am going to probably come back to you in early 2022 with an update to that ordinance. If you don't even change anything, just because the enforcement on it isn't very good, it's not certainly in line with what we have as enforcement on other ordinances. So at a minimum, that stuff needs to be cleaned up to make it enforceable so that we can get people to do what they're supposed to be doing.
I would just add before we discuss this, that we heard of some really horrendous situations in the borough that was totally unsafe for people to be living there.
Well, I think we wanted to start with that Barb and then we wanted to go ahead and talk inspections and things of that nature, do we not?
That's what I'm here to find out from you guys.
I mean, I was there about a year ago and I thought we did this.
From a code standpoint, if you're, if you're aware of an issue, you can go out and handle it right now. So is it, is, can you not?
What we do mostly is what I would call reactive code enforcement. So that's where an issue comes up and someone brings it to our attention and yes, we can go in. The point that, that Barb is making, I believe, is that unfortunately that doesn't catch a lot of these. And what happens in a lot of these is our emergency services through police and fire go in to respond to incidents and find conditions that were not reported, you know, where there's hoarding, we have multiple people living in units that probably shouldn't have been facilitating multiple people, things like that. That's, that's where the issue is. And I can't pick that up in code.
If we would implement inspections, what is your vision of how they would get done? Who would do them? Who would, who'd be saddled with that responsibility?
Well, that, that's all stuff I would have to research and come back to because there's numbers and things that are associated with that as to, you know, where, where does that fee come from, pays for it? Is it a revenue neutral sort of a thing where basically, you know, there are scenarios in a lot of communities that we looked at as we were doing our research that they outsource that. So they simply collect a fee to pay for the outsource and that's it. You know, and, and that also could certainly cut the borough free of being the one who has to do the inspection and then, you know, have to work out.
That's a good idea.
The resource issues.
If you look in that memo, it talks about just a life safety inspection and also an inspection that's a little more grit to it.
I mean, I think the life safety inspection is important.
Definitely.
We, we had a long conversation, many conversations about it last year. And I think the, what killed the whole policy or ordinance was tying commercial to the residential. Whereas this one would just be the residential, which I believe life safety needs to happen at the time that the permit's filed. Are you looking at this as an annual permit?
It wouldn't be a permit. It would be treated as a licensed, so you would, a licensed registration where, you know, you would have to figure out what interval you wanted to have those inspections. A lot of the communities we looked at did them on two and three-year cycles. They didn't do it, or change of turnover. So if the occupants change over, a life safety would be done. Or if the tenant stays there over a period of time, every two to three years, then you would schedule and there would be an inspection.
And we had this conversation before where it was the fire chief and some of their staff doing it, which I didn't see them being able to do the number of apartments that are continually increasing at our 56% or whatever it is we are without addition of staff.
Just, that's what I understand, but I wasn't here, so.
To, to jump in on the historical perspective of the staffing issue, it was modeled at one point in time that it could take two full-time employees on a biannual basis to just get through them all.
I like the idea of outsourcing that.
I do too.
And it just washes.
That's the magnitude of it. It's, it's a lot of properties.
Because it does take some liability off us.
But if you have licensing fees, would you end up with your fees helping take care of your outsourced fees?
That's our goal.
That would be our goal.
Yes.
We want to do it to make the communities safer and make it self-standing.
And I think it also needs to be based on a per-unit basis scaled by the number of units in a building. Because of the, you know, you get four, or five, or six, or, you know, some of these other buildings that have multiple rooms in them, that's, that needs to be, they need to be licensed, however you define it.
Each abode?
Yeah.
I think that maybe people would, maybe not put any in there.
We have to realize how accelerated apartment creation is in our town.
Yeah.
I mean, when we start approaching 60%, if we can slow it down a little bit because of the cost associated, then that's not a bad thing. Unless you've got a serious developer that does a McAllister or something like that. But just this, you know, chop job of some of these places is just bad. And I think, you know, finding a way to get more control under that, I think is important.
So we're saying, we're saying definitely an outsource.
Yes.
I think that, yes.
I agree.
Let me back to train up. I think what he's asking, so we, we're already rewriting it because it, it's not written the way we'd like it to be. In the process of doing that, we can actually make it more robust and we can then add these components that we've talked about. In 2019 was the last time council entertained it and it's coming up again. So I think the directive that he's looking for is that we can direct him, that council has an appetite to add an actual real inspection to that. All the details to be worked out through our various committees and our efforts in doing so. We don't have to.
So we're saying we're looking at life safety and inspection?
The life sa, life safety.
Yeah. Which I assume you would bring in comparable other model ordinances potentially for us to use as a starting point.
Approaching it as engineers do, I think the first step is, yeah, to collect some additional data. If that's the direction you want to go, I think we should collect model ordinances, we should collect model fee schedules and how they're set up. We should be looking at frequency, you know, intervals for inspections. What is the typical for those? I think all those things that I sort of glossed over in my initial run, as you're now giving me direction, we would sort of go back to that now and kind of refine that view to look at it closer and come back to you with additional information to say this is, this is kind of where it's at. And then I guess we have to make the decision how it would move forward as far as crafting an ordinance and those things.
Are we okay with that?
I, I'm absolutely in favor of crafting an ordinance or beginning now. We have to do it. Penn Township recently, I was talking to somebody, said, well, we have 20% of apartment, we, you know, rentals. Really? Guess what Hanover has? And we were just joking and laughing, okay, and, and clowning around. But to be very serious, it's time has come. If we don't do it now, it's going to supersede us and it's going to ride over us. We have got, we have problems in this borough already. And I would love through this to be able to define, correct, and make this town whole in the way that we process this now for rentals.
The only thing that I recall is, when we did this, and this was before you were on council.
Okay.
But we, last time we did this, we had standing room only, and this was before COVID.
Okay.
We had a lot of, I'll say nicely, put it nicely, pissed off landlords.
I was here for that.
Were you here?
Yes, I was.
Okay, maybe you were one of them.
They were sitting there.
No, but anyhow.
Maybe I was.
What I'm wondering is, is if maybe we get, I'll call them some of the, if we could get some buy-in from, I'm going to use an example like maybe Chris Throne in Hanover. He's got a large, a large portfolio of rental properties and he seems to do very well with them. And what I'm thinking is, if we could maybe work with the landlords a little bit, get them a little bit of buy-in on this. And then still, I do like the third-party thing because I think, I think they could probably do it easier than what we can. But I mean, I do know, I was a landlord myself for many, many years. Landlords get the crappy end of the deal a lot of times. Not all the time, but a lot of time they do. I mean, because essentially, like you, you say about life safety issues, well, if I rent a property out, how do I know I've just rented it to a hoarder? I mean, I really have no way of knowing it. Because I had that happen to me one time. I mean, you know, it, you don't know it until it's basically too late and then you've got a house full of junk to get rid of, so.
But if we have the inspections, Chris, and then the landlord is notified, then you are made aware of a problem that is existing and has to be taken care of.
I just like to get somehow or another, what I, what I'm trying to avoid is I just have visions of seeing another meeting where you have.
You will.
Well, we will. Tell you, we can't avoid it.
You don't want to do it.
Yeah.
And, you know, laws are not written for those that obey them, right? I mean, it's just.
No, and, and we can follow our very public processes. The only one we have, which is to communicate our written agendas, to refer to various committees, to work with staff, and to encourage public involvement. The last time, it seemed like no one wanted to avail themselves of the opportunities other than showing up at the October 2019 Borough Council meeting and complain.
Right. And I would like Eric to go ahead and get this information and begin to resolve the issue so that when we have these meetings, we can respond accordingly for the benefit of the people of this town.
Eric Scott has marching orders, right, Eric?
He does.
I'm writing them down now.
You good?
He's got them.
Chief, provide him some Kevlar.
Thanks, Eric.
And it will be an opportunity for more open discussion. So I think we'll be.
It'll need it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Eric. You good?
I am. I'll stay up here for number eight, just in case there's a conversation or question.
All right. And the next one we have is the Hanover Economic Development Corporation will vote to advertise an ordinance to appropriate $10,000, is it $10,000? From the approved 2021 budget for the, from the general fund to the HEDC, that's the 2021, to the HEDC for the purpose to stimulate economic development.
Did you say how much?
30.
30?
10.
I can explain.
30.
Okay, please.
Maybe I see 30 here, so.
I know.
It says 10, 19. This was, let her explain.
This is a work in progress. So the Hanover Economic Development Corporation has been working with Eric staffing it and very effectively to vision all the projects that they will take on over, over the coming years. One important thing was how can they get staff support or, or expert support with grants and matching their projects to appropriate funding sources and tracking those and putting those packages together. They've worked with the county and the county for $10,000 is willing to go into a service agreement and the county has the expert staff to help the Economic Development Corporation. In addition, I learned from our solicitor that the way that we should be allocating money after it's approved in the budget to an outside agency is through an ordinance. So because the HEDC is ready right now to go forward with the $10,000 service agreement, I'm asking you to approve the ordinance to allow them to go forward to pay 10,000, not 30,000, to the HEDC for the service agreement with the county. The reason there's 30 in there is that $30,000 was what was in your 2021 budget and is also in your proposed 2022 budget. And we, at the time that the agenda went out, I wasn't sure what they needed and for exactly what purpose. So that's why you see 30 on here. We did spend $10,000 of the 30 on legal fees in 2021. There's, would be $10,000 left in 2021 and this would be the third piece of the, of the $30,000 that would be for staff support.
I really don't have a problem with this as long as we take into consideration that whatever we're going to do in economic development is considered for the entire borough of Hanover. Because the Center Square is not the only section of this town.
Agreed.
Where we can invite and bring in people into our area. Okay, there's a lot of inventive ways. Okay, we have, I'm looking at the Wareham, you know, they have their open house and they have their musicals in the spring and the summer. We have the Hanover Fair Museum. You know, we, we are very creative and I don't want to see it being stifled just in one location. And I hope we're all in agreement with that.
Well, keep in mind, there's a distinct difference. What you defined was probably more operations of Main Street than the EDC.
It might be, but I'm hoping that it's understood that it's for the entire borough.
But what you're bringing up also is in the comprehensive plan. So we have things in the plan regarding some of those things. So yes, I mean, I'm sure they will take a look at that because that's part of their responsibility.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Just that we don't close at all. Okay, thank you.
Sure. So I have a motion to vote to advertise that ordinance?
Yes.
Chuck, thank you. A second? Voting, thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Do we have an ordinance?
All right. Two quick things at your place. I'm sorry.
Was a question, do we have an ordinance?
I'm sorry, was a question after the vote? Go ahead.
Yes. The solicitor's saying we should transfer funds related.
Let me, that's part of why this got tangled. I took a look at what was being requested. I looked into the history and it looks as though we don't have an ordinance for Main Street Hanover. So you will see in January of 2022, an ordinance for both organizations to allocate it correctly. We have a resolution on file from two years ago, but there, there was no similar procedure. So this will be.
Yeah, I didn't recall.
Because we give money before.
This will become one of your regular routine things you do in January, have an ordinance to fund outside agencies. In this case, there's two, 40,000 for Main Street Hanover and 30,000 for the Economic Development Corporation.
Continuum in the ordinance, this is a continuum that we, that this money is handed over every year?
Yes. Yes, they are budgeted in every budget. You've already approved it.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. It's going to be in the budget every year.
Yes.
At least for the next year.
Well, it's.
Unless the council decides to change it.
Yeah, council gets to change that.
You get, okay.
Yes, that's, this, yeah, you can't mind a future council. You've made a decision in 2021, you've made a decision for 2022, but at some point you may decide not to fund either organization.
Yeah, because this is where I was confused.
Yes, it is confusing and it was for me as well until we, we were working on this for a few days.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, anytime.
Two quick things are at your place. If you recall, a couple weeks ago, we had a young man who was here from high school that was very articulate, spoke very well, and we thought, gee, he did a nice job, maybe we should have some kids. So, at your place, I do have some information about the junior council person program. It's, it basically provides you with the opportunity to participate in local government. They don't get a vote. They don't attend executive sessions, but they have an opportunity to be a part of the government and hopefully learn about it. And I thought perhaps we could speak to John Escola, and maybe the student council person, and maybe when they do student council elections in the spring, they could vote, and someone would, would want to be, and they would want to attend. Because I think sometimes in the past, you get kids that are really busy, they don't come. But this would be an assigned position, maybe, that student council could vote, and we could get maybe two sophomores who would be on for a year or two, instead, you won't get a senior, because they were going off. So, and, you know, talk to student council about it, and see if we could maybe get that started for the fall of the year. We'd have to approve it, but just take a look at it. Take a look at the information, see what you think.
Well, on the Hanover School Board, when we had our meetings, we, they, each class was represented, and they sat at a separate table, okay? And they presented things that involved their age group, okay? But they were part of the overall commitment to the, to the school board, okay? And they also viewed their findings on what they thought as we were discussing, okay, the items that we had to put into perspective. But it was a training for them for the future, and I found it quite interesting. They're, they're highly intelligent, and they put two and two together, I think, more rapidly than we do at our age.
Well, I think they're the future citizens, and it'd be nice to maybe have some of them included. But, take a look at it and see what you think. We can talk about it later. We don't have to prove it or anything. It's just there for your information.
I think it's a good idea.
And also, at your place, there's some information. I was asked by a couple people if we were going to evaluate NAN while the people, prior to the new person's coming on council, which does make sense. So, Dory helped me get this information together for you. On the front, it talks about, it's the same evaluation form we had last year. That's the same thing. And take a look at those dates and see if you can, in your busy, while you're making cookies, you can evaluate NAN. You can take a look at it and see if you can get the information to Dory by December 21st, and then we can sort of get it together. If you don't get it together by the 21st, then we'll just go later, and we'll just see how many we get by the 21st and go from there. So, just strive to get it done by the 21st if you can. If you can't, we'll backpedal and figure out another date, okay? But then everybody's kind of busy. All right?
Got it.
And I just, if you would, please pass on to Chief Klausert. I would like to see the revised job descriptions sometime, since now we have to budget to get an assistant. He said he was going to get those to us.
Okay.
Revised job description for the chief, the assistant, Vanessa, because everybody's job's going to change. So, I just sort of want to see what they're doing. Anybody have anything else to report, any, from committees or any other public bodies? Anything from any committees? The management reports will be in our, in our...
Did we get them?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. I'm sorry.
That's my fault. They're usually in this packet, in case you want to discuss them.
And we have any correspondence or anything to share? Okay, we have another opportunity for public comment. If anyone is out there zooming in, or anyone here has any comments they would like to make, now is the time to come forward, indicate your name, address, and give a comment. Seeing none? Anything else from any other council members? Okay, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Hello.
Chuck, second? Thank you very much. Okay.